Welcome to the Wednesday, August 13, 2014, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item of business is approval of the minutes from July 23.
My move that the minutes be approved.
Gregory, thank you. Is there a second?
Second, then.
Any comments or observations, corrections that we need to make? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of July 23, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain?
Wendy and Kurt. Thank you. Correspondents? Bill, anything?
Nothing from the staff under that heading.
Anything from members under that heading? All right. Joel, Transportation Commission.
The Transportation Commission met on August 7th last week. We spent some time talking about questions for the citizen survey, which is coming up, which I believe we're going to do with this tonight, too. The largest part of the meeting was taken up with a review of ongoing and pending city projects. Quite interesting, talking about the North Polk and the progress on the intersection on Mountain View and the pending work to go on on A Street and a number of other relatively more minor ones. And a little bit of discussion about the upcoming issues that may arise once the state finally decides what's going to happen with the routing on 95 South and exactly how the junction between the new road and the existing roads are going to be configured. There's a number of issues there that will have to be settled, and that's basically it.
Any, do you know anything about the status of our transportation plan? If that's passed over, it's just up to going to council and...
It wasn't discussed at the last Transportation Commission meeting, but I believe it's anticipated to be presented to City Council in September or early October.
Oh, okay.
I know it's been dependent upon the availability of the consultant team to come for that presentation.
Okay.
So I'd either say it's going to be the second meeting of September or maybe the first meeting of October if I haven't seen it.
Not nailed down yet. Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Open microphone. So at this time, members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda tonight or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you are interested, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any takers tonight?
Because my deal's on the agenda.
Your deal's on the agenda. We'll get to you in a second. Yep. All right. Hearing none. Ridgeview Estates' second edition final plat review.
As the commission is aware, the Ridgeview Estates subdivision is a subdivision, I think, on about approximately 12-acre parcel located on the east side of the existing Ridgeview Estates addition to the city of Moscow, bound by the Troy Highway, Highway 8 on the south, and abutting Wild Rose Ridgeview and Notting Hill on the northwest and west. The preliminary plat was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 14 at a public hearing, at which time the commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat with a number of conditions of approval, many of those relating to stormwater, streets, and public utilities elements. The City Council conducted a hearing on the preliminary subdivision plat on June 2. They adopted the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation with the same condition recommendations of approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so that was approved. The APK has submitted the final plat, is in your packet this evening. Staff has reviewed it for conformance with the conditions of approval of the preliminary plat and has found it to be in conformance and recommends approval of the recommendation of approval, the final plat, to the City Council. The only item that I know that is still in discussion related to street names, as you may recall, I think when the initial submission was received, Notting Hill Drive entered the subdivision plat at the intersection with Ridgeview. It was continued to be Notting Hill all the way down to the intersection with Highway 8. And Public Works was concerned with having one contiguous name going through kind of two 90-degree turns. There were conditions of approval related to changing the name of the street at the 90-degree bend, so the APK changed names to be consistent with that. So Roxbury is a new name that was not previously on the plat. I think Public Works maybe has come back to the belief that maybe that should be Notting Hill all the way down, just to have consistency and not introduce a third street name. If you were going to be traversing from the Troy Highway to, let's say, the roundabout as kind of two anchor points of a roadway segment, you would turn off the highway on Roxbury, you would continue on Ridgeview, turn on Notting Hill, and you would have essentially three streets you would be traversing to make that segment. So I think that's now their revised recommendation. That would be something the council can certainly take a look at on their consideration of final approval. But the plat itself, with regard to lot patterns and street access and others, are all consistent with the conditions of approval with that one remaining item to be resolved by the City Council when they review it. So that's all staff has, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
The motion we need is to recommend to council approval of the final plat?
That's correct.
Okay. You want to take mine? Me as making the motion?
Yeah.
All right. Kurt, second. Any other discussion? And we'll anticipate that council will start out the naming of the Roxbury piece. All in favor of recommending to council approval of the final plat, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I think that's unanimous. All right. Review of side yard fence height limitations standard research.
There you go. I think we had a conversation about this a couple of years ago, if you may recall, but currently, I'll just kind of go through this. The city has had a variety of different standards over the major iteration, the major updates of the city zoning code over the last 40 years as it relates to fencing. We'll kind of go through this fairly quickly. It's actually not 1981, but it was 1970 that we adopted limitations. I thought it was established in '81, actually found in ordinance from 1970 that also had fairly consistent language regarding the heights of fences. And we're really primarily talking about fences on residential properties that may exist within a front yard or a street side. And the street side is the area that we tend to have the greatest level of conflict, and that's really the area of discussion. But when you get into those setback areas, whether it's the front or street side, then there are some height limitations that the zoning code would currently limit. So right now, if you were to place a three-foot fence in that front setback area, so from your property line back into the lot a certain distance depending upon the zoning district, and typically that's going to range from 15 to 20 feet for a front setback, 13 to 17 feet on a street side setback. If you're going to construct a fence in that area, then if it's a solid fence, its height is limited to three feet in height, and if it's a, what we consider to be an open fence, that height limit is four and a half feet. Currently, the language for an open fence states that an open fence is where the posts and material constitute not more than one-third of the fence area, so it's a fairly open fence. In the past 10 years, and this has been an item that we certainly have encountered over the course of the last 10 years, the city has received seven different variance requests for properties related to a desire to have a taller fence in a street side yard. We've not had any in a front yard. It is most commonly a corner lot. The fact that the property, the right-of-way boundary begins, you know, potentially as far back as seven to 10 feet back from the face of the curb. You then have a side yard setback of 15 beyond that. You can be 20 to 25 feet back from the edge of the curb before you can be able to install a six-foot-high solid fence, which is typically the goal. Oftentimes, it's the intent or the desire of the property owners is kind of screened to create some privacy in their rear yard where it kind of opens up to the street on the corner lot. We've received seven of those requests within the last 10 years, and all seven of those have been approved by the zoning board of adjustment, I believe. Five of those were approved at a six-foot height, and two were approved at a five-foot height. And I didn't look at the specifics whether they were only requesting five or that was a limitation imposed by the board, but that's, you know, essentially 100% of the variances that have been received for that type of request have been approved by the board adjustment over the last 10 years. At the council meeting on July 21, Pat O'Connell came, and during the public comment period, made a comment regarding the hardship that these standards were creating for property owners that had existing fences that were installed 40 to 50 years ago prior to the establishment of these standards, that were getting to that age of needing to be replaced, and were being told or being required essentially to have those fences reconstructed in accordance with the zoning standards. Essentially, the nonconforming language of the zoning code states that if, you know, if a structure is destroyed or if you're reconstructing something at some point in time, it has to be reconstructed in a manner that's consistent with the current standards of the zoning code. So things that are declared as nonconformities in the zoning code are intended to be lost in time, so nonconforming structures and nonconforming fences as they age out, as they decompose or essentially are removed, that new installations are to be in conformance with the current standards. And probably my staff members that process fence applications probably indicate that this is, you know, the largest point of conflict that they actually have with customers and understanding what they can place on their property, what some of the limitations are, and probably the limitation of height in street side yards is probably the one that has the greatest level of dissatisfaction. I think most everybody understands the front yard and not wanting to have tall stockade-like appearance, but the street side yard on corner lots is a item that certainly we have feedback upon on a fairly regular basis. As we went back through the ordinance, just to kind of see the progression of the standards. In 1957, ordinance 982 is the first section of the code that had any reference to fences, and it only really addressed the site triangle at intersections. So at that point, it was a 30-foot triangle placing the intersections, and essentially on a corner lots, no fence, wall, hedge, or other structure planting more than three and a half feet in height will be allowed within that site triangle. There were no other limitations on fence heights at that time, so whether it was in a front street anywhere, there really was nothing else in the code that addressed fences in 1957. The next largest update to the code in 1971, under ordinance 1206, began to establish some standards. In this case, in 1971, actually fences providing a maximum six-feet height. Side obstruction from adjacent properties may be built on the side and rear property lines and across the front of the property line in line with the front of the building. So it didn't use the term "front setbacks," but it was just essentially wherever the building was placed on the property, you could have a six-foot-high fence along that building wall along the front of the property, but not closer to the street right-of-way than 20 feet. So essentially, all fences had to be held back at least 20 feet from the street right-of-way. So again, corner lots must observe the 20-foot fence setback on both streets. So essentially, those fences required to be in 1971, setback 20 feet from the right-of-way line, which is actually fairly restrictive. Yeah, it's significantly more than, significantly more than our limitation right now on side yards. It also stated from the 20-foot fence setback line to the street right-of-way, solid fences a maximum of three feet in height. So again, this is where the first reference to a solid fence that was in that 20-foot area could only be limited to three feet in height. So you could have a fence out to the right-of-way line, but that's when the height limitation came in. Measure from the ground to which the fence, and then also, I think we had four and a half feet, got cut off here, four and a half feet where the fence, where the materials don't constitute more than one-third of the fence area. So those essentially, that's the first appearance of the three feet for a solid, four and a half for an open. Six-foot fences, solid fences had to be 20 feet back on both sides, and so that was the first iteration, 1971. 1981, we started to get more consistent with what we have now. Fences within the street setback line shall be limited to the following, again, three feet in height and the open rail at the four and a half feet in height, and that's really small to read there, apologize. But that was the beginning, and "street setback line" was the term that was utilized and made reference to the side streets having the same setback line. Another amendment, and there actually were two that occurred in 1981. This was an ordinance 1464 that directly addressed fences only. The next was a complete recodification of the city code that happened in December of the same year under 1476, and again, fairly similar language and same standards essentially at that point in time. The next codification or significant update to the zoning code was in 1990, and again, same standards down here at the bottom. So fences constructed within required, front yards or street side yards, so rather than the street lines or street setbacks, we started to refer to yards in the language, shall be not more than the three solid and the four and a half on the open. And that's pretty much consistently what we have in the zoning code today. So that was, 1990 was the most recent iteration, but the establishment of the height limitations in that area began in kind of the 1970s. I just have a couple photographs just to kind of illustrate what we're really talking about here. So this is a property on Blaine, and it actually faces the side street here. The home is placed here near the front setback, and so this is our street side, and the fence, you know, essentially a six-foot-high solid fence that extends from the home out into that street side area, out near, within about, you know, three, four feet of the sidewalk or so in that location. So right now, under the code, if you're going to do a solid fence, that's limited to three feet in height, so approximately half of that fence height. Until here, you're probably 15 feet back, and then you could go into the six-foot solid fence. And we do allow, you know, kind of a combination of a three-foot solid and then like a lattice top to get to a four and a half foot high fence if somebody wanted to do that underneath the current code, but that's kind of what you're limited with right now. I presume the intent was you have kind of the open lawn areas in the front of the homes that would wrap into now the front yards of the lots that are adjacent on Blaine, and so you kind of would have that continuous open space without having a large visual obstruction up in that area. I presume that was kind of the intent and the purpose of the code and the limitations on the fence heights when they were established back then was to kind of preserve that common green area that wraps around the block where, you know, this lot's side lot line is going to be adjacent to their front lot line on that case. You certainly could have two lots that go back to back with another side street on the other side, and if it fronted on the opposite side street, then they would both have a side yard on that side. But that's kind of an example, and we have certainly a number of those in town. This doesn't show up very well, but this is kind of front view of the same property and the fence out here extending beyond the home. And again, from the other side, this home faces the side street, this is their street side yard, and then that fence projects out and around in the corner on the lot. There are a number of examples, I think many, I'm sure, probably are aware. This section on the corner, this is on Blaine as well. This was one variance that was approved, I think, I think I processed that back in about 2003 or '04, I was 2023. So, you know, 10 years ago, that was one of the properties that was approved, again, corner lot and a fairly shallow lot. And a lot of times, you end up in these corner lots with a fairly shallow lot depth. The home is setback from the principal street. It doesn't leave much of a rear yard area, and so incorporating some of that side yard area into that private space is a way that they kind of help compensate for that. That's a typical use. That same property, actually, both of these were granted variances on each side of 8th Street. They were both kind of processed in a very similar time. Again, this is a corner lot on, it's on Miss Pierce, on 8th, and this is that one there on Blaine and 8th. So those are just kind of examples of some that we have in town. This was another one on 6 that actually was granted a variance to be placed out in the street side yard. It actually fronts, I don't know if that's Lincoln there, but this is on 6th Street, and this is a street side yard and a variance that was approved in that location.
So backing up, Bill. That one, the rest of the layout is, there's a tree lawn, and so the whole thing is much more generous from the curb to where the fence is.
Yes.
Then I think the first one that you showed us was...
On Blaine, it was within three to four feet of the walk, and the walk was adjacent to the curb.
Right.
On Blaine, you don't have that tree lawn area along Blaine. In this case, you have an alley, so now you're kind of in an area with an alley system that divides between it and then the adjacent property that then fronts, I think that's on 6, I believe. And so that alley provides kind of some separation from the fence out. This was another one on D, I think it actually runs across the street from the costers that we granted a variance to as well. This individual property, I should have had an aerial photograph, but there's about 10 feet from the rear of the property to the rear lot line, so they had no rear yard area. And so they wanted to create some private yard space by having an opportunity to have a fence out there. One of the conditions of approval was to place those bushes there, which had actually grown quite tall, to just kind of help screen the appearance of the fence. There is no limitation on vegetation, so if you want to do a hedge, you want to get some six-foot arborvitus, there is no limitation on any type of vegetation. And so that was one of the requirements, is they put some bushes against the fence to help kind of screen in and soften the appearance of the fence out on that edge. And this is the property right across, I think, right across the street, that Pat came to talk with the council on the 21st, where this existing fence, I don't know what the height, and Pat can certainly talk about it specifically, but that was a fence that they desired to replace and would have to shift back, I'm sure, probably at least 10 feet to get outside the side yard setback. And in many cases with homes that had fences out in these locations, you know, landscaping gets established in that area. That becomes accustomed to be the area for the rear yard, and so it's a little bit easier if it's a new lot and they're just now landscaping, just establishing fences compared to somebody who's had one there for, you know, many years. This is just an example, and this is actually another one on Miss Pierce that was granted a variance. This ends up as a street side yard for the lot that's adjacent here, and, you know, this home couldn't have a six-foot fence, you know, in front of, this is setback quite some distance, so they probably could have one at some point here, but then where you have that, you know, if this is considered to be the street side and the rear lot line for this home, then that fence extends, you know, beyond the face of adjacent lots. And that's just kind of one of those things, but when you have a corner lot adjacent to an interior lot, this is a rear lot line, you can have a six-foot solid fence, and it's just that street side setback that comes in that's traditionally about, you know, three-quarters of the front setback, so you end up with fences that can extend on this lot beyond what a fence could extend on this lot, just because of the nature of the street side versus the front setbacks. Again, another similar one across the street from that one. And so we do have, do have a number of those. There was a, I think, I asked Becky to do some research. As we look at our standards, anytime we're evaluating, we do look and see how other people handle them in surrounding jurisdictions. You can't read that very well, but we did take a look at Pullman, Lewiston, Post Falls, Boise, Coeur d'Alene, Spokane to kind of compare how they address fence heights. One of the things that's fairly consistent is that everybody has a heights limitation within a front setback. So in front yard areas, it's pretty consistently that is somewhere between three and four and a half feet. So for us, we had that difference of three to four and a half for a solid or open. Pullman has three and a half in front yards. Street side yards is six feet. Lewiston actually doesn't have any language other than six feet is permitted. Anything higher requires a building permit, and they have a three-foot height limitation within vision triangles. Post Falls, three feet in, street side yards, six feet, I guess maybe, or front yards, three feet, street side yards, six feet, as long as the fence height is not extended in the front yard setback where the apartment entrance to the residence is oriented. Boise, front yards is three feet in height, four feet for an open fence, and three feet in vision triangles, nothing on street sides. Coeur d'Alene, front yards at four feet. And Spokane, front yards are three and a half feet. Spokane did have some language for side and rear yards, is six feet, but no fence may be closer than 12 feet to the curb of an arterial street and no closer than the back of sidewalk on a local access street, seven feet from the face of the curb if there is no sidewalk. So there was some minimum separation from the street that was, you know, at least seven feet from the face of the curb on a street side, but beyond that, there wasn't a height limit. So as you looked at those jurisdictions, we were the only one that had a fence height limitation in a street side yard. So certainly, some of the considerations in looking at, we've had what we consider to be a fairly large number of variances over the last 10 years on that specific element. So it does tend to indicate a consideration of a potential amendment to the code or legislative change. You have that many people looking for that kind of request, then it's getting 100% approval. Maybe it's indicating that there's something in the code that may need to be adjusted. We do appear to be the only entity in the region that restricts the heights of fences within the street side yards. So we are suggesting looking at a possible removal restriction upon fence heights within street side yards with some considerations. I'm not sure that Becky necessarily highlighted those, but side triangles near street intersections, I think, needs to be addressed. Those are a concern, and so that, I think, needs to be addressed in the fence limitations. There probably ought to be some minimum separation from adjacent sidewalks to allow for snow removal or storage. There are some areas where property lines and newer subdivisions might be three to five feet behind the sidewalks. That's not really a problem. They can put the fence at the property line. They can actually even put a fence in the right-of-way if you get an encroachment permit, but it may be, especially in the situations where the sidewalk is to the back of the curb, you know, allowing for maybe two feet of separation for snow removal or just kind of some, so you're not crowding the sidewalk of pedestrians quite so close to the back of the walk, maybe, you know, at least some minimum separation for kind of that space for pedestrians and for snow removal if that was the situation. The other thing is, we would recommend some revisions to the open fence language to accommodate what we consider to be more of a picket fence construction, where you would have a picket and a picket width gap and another picket. That doesn't meet the fencing material not constituting more than one-third, you know, and we have essentially been generally allowing 50% opening of a standard picket fence because one-third was pretty restrictive and only limited to kind of split rail or such wide picket gapping that dogs could, you know, easily escape, or limiting you to chain link, and so we would recommend revising that language to make it more of a standard kind of picket yapping on the fence. So that was the conclusion of my comments. Have you had something you would like to...
If you would come up and just share a perspective, and we'll have a little discussion.
For people that don't know me, my name is Patrick O'Connell, and I'm a landscape architect. I own North Country Landscaping, and I've been doing this in town for about 35, 36 years. It's interesting, do you mind if I sit down? It's interesting, every year, something different kind of comes up, and on this particular year, the new hip thing is older fences falling down. Maybe it's been all the windstorms or whatever. But as I started looking at this, it's basically on these corner lots, these people are kind of almost in a tough situation, and I think your picture on, the first picture you showed on Blaine Street, as you turn it, everybody else has a private backyard, but as soon as you take that house and you put it on a corner, your private backyard is now everybody's business. And if you start cutting it back with this new 15-foot, it's almost gives them just a little breezeway to where, on one side or the other of their house. So all that other yard that they have to maintain is for nothing. Even though they have the front of their yard, the whole side yard is there for just... Even though they have the front of their yard, the whole side yard is there for just, almost to live in a fishbowl. And with a lot of these old houses that, you know, maybe it's 40 years or so, and so they put in the fences that, nobody said anything, it was accepted. They put their lilac hedges or their viburnum hedges, they set up their maple trees, their edging, their heads for their beds and turning into, for the sprinkler to go into the yard. Now, all that has to be sacrificed, and a lot of these, a lot of these property owners are late 70s, early 80s, they're in good health, they would kind of like to stay in the yard, and now that whole yard that they used to maintain is basically now not even going to be accessible to them. After 40-some years, fence posts tend to rot. There is a provision that you can fix it, but if you're going to do something right, do it right. Okay, you take off the fence post, you just kind of brace it up until those, and then by that time, you're nailing into a two-by-four stringer that has no integrity left. I don't think that's the way to do it. We were kind of laughing at the, what, 721 meeting, you know, how much can you fix? 50%? Do 50% this year, 50% next year, you got a brand-new fence. So they can get around it that way in two years. I understand putting a fence in front of a house, you know, for an Apache-type look, but on some of these, if they meet the requirement on the corner triangle and it's, it's, it's nothing that's going to block traffic, I understand snow removal, I don't even think there's even sidewalks in this subdivision.
In the park area? No.
Yeah, in that park area. So the kids are walking in the street anyways in that situation. And on, when you show the pictures of the arborvitae's, you can plant. Lilacs almost right behind the curb, and that's where we're having the problem with the Tam junipers, Fitzer junipers growing right over, somebody can't even park in front of these houses, you start to do. So I understand that. I had, you know, like singing to the choir, everybody in the building department, they agreed with me on these older structures, but their hands were tied. And they're the ones that suggested that I come and talk to all you people. So I, I came up with a name like heritage privilege or historic privilege on some of these older corner lots. I guess anybody that moves into a new subdivision, they would have to, you know, abide by these new requirements, but in a way, they're damned too because they're buying these corner lots. And a boy and a girl should be able to have a dog, the dog should be able to run, the dog shouldn't be, some of these requirements, it's probably no bigger than this for their backyard if you live on a corner lot. So it's a very small dog, I guess, like a chihuahua or something. And some of the pictures, and I could pass these around, this is the one situation that I'm talking about.
Oops. TV just got reset.
Why don't we pause and just make sure we...
Get back on the air.
We may be on generators, but may have kicked on, this building's on a generator, so...
Okay, we'll take a minute here.
Just to do the recording.
Yeah.
Well, and I can't speak for, you know, the reasons that.
Nineteen seventy one.
Yeah, I wasn't born in nineteen seventy.
Boy, you're young.
I think an answer to your question might be the National Guard building on Blaine.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
And that building essentially.
Yeah.
Comes right up, and I live over there, so I always get home one block to the north. So I can actually see what, however, I mean, I'm not on planning and zoning, but it looks to me like a lot of this common sense would change, you know, could be used in crafting something because it appears to me the only city dog in the fight would be simply can, when you come up, can you see around the corner?
Yeah, the side triangle makes sense.
Yeah.
And that one violates the side triangle, I would guess. I mean, you often see people who are inching out. They see enough, decide to go.
The Army certainly. Because the side triangle is taken probably forty feet, so you take the curb lines and project lines where they intersect at intersection. Pull line back forty feet and then draw a diagonal between those two points. That's how you define the side triangle. And yes, the Army is well.
Having built the fence at Fluss Prairie School, that the piece that is louder and made. And done exactly that exercise with chalk to draw the line, it's surprising how much it still crowds the visibility for drivers trying to pull out at that intersection.
It is a minimum.
Right.
It is a minimum, but yes.
Yeah, so.
So that's, that is one of the interests would be safety and visibility at the intersection. I don't think that's the case you're bringing up.
No, yeah, right, yeah. And in most residential cases on the street side, because you've got that front setback at twenty feet, and you've already pushed the fence back to that point, there'll be some separation just from the fact that property lines aren't at curb line. So you've got at least fifteen or twenty foot setback. You may have five to seven feet before the property line begins where the setbacks measured from. And so, you know, in most cases, it's set back quite some distance that it doesn't, it may not often present a side obstruction. But it is something that I think we should.
How far off the, if you take the right of way in most neighborhoods, the city right of way, how far off the typical side? Say you just have parking and you have sidewalk, then where's the property line normally? Because that would be a problem, having a fence right on the sidewalk, I would think.
It's going very all over the place. So it's gonna be very specific to that neighborhood, the right of which and that street width. The, for example, on Blaine, I think you're into that two or three feet behind the sidewalk. But if you go into newer subdivisions.
Or older.
Pins are in the walk. I mean, Fort Russell, you're gonna be twenty feet back. And you're an eighty foot right of way, so you're up to the front wall of the home.
Yeah, you are.
In many areas. In some newer subdivisions, the pins are in the sidewalk. That is, the property line is in the sidewalk. There is a five or ten foot easement that is granted for franchise utilities and for that sidewalk to exist essentially on that private property and that lot. And so that property line actually goes out into the walk. So if that's like an Anderson Frontier, someone Pope's Third, or even Hill Six, you've got pins in the walk.
Because we have a lot of sidewalks in town that are fine, but they're too narrow for people to pass each other. If they're pushing a stroller or a dog or whatever.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't want to push pedestrians into the street because somebody had a fence right on the sidewalk line. That's, that's what I'm thinking about, you know? So some cushion there so it can't go right onto the sidewalk, I guess, would be something to think about.
Yeah, sort of to rephrase my question a little bit, aside from the side triangle, what's the issue we're trying to address with the height requirement?
I think it was aesthetic of kind of the open green that wraps the block. So if you think about the block from the aerial view, the, the front lawns are kind of open air and space. And then, you know, wrapping it around the block, I think, was the intent, was probably the intent. I'm speaking of something that began in nineteen seventy and went through several iterations. But I think it's kind of that preservation. If you, if you look down Blaine, where you've got front yards on the other side and you have a fence that juts out and obstructs kind of the open view down the street. I mean, it's not the best aesthetic, but you have to balance aesthetic and property, you know, property rights and the beneficial use of the property and enjoyment of the property, and those have to be balanced. But I, you know, I think that's overriding, I probably, because you're talking about height. And, you know, I think that was probably the largest driver, because if it was just a side triangle, we could have stuck with what we had in nineteen fifty seven.
Yeah.
That only addressed that aspect of it. But I think it was more about having that open space flow along the front yards and around the corners and kind of wrapping the blocks was, was probably the intent.
Yeah. I'm wondering if you could, and you'd have to do a model of this, but if you cut across at a forty-five and you took off just that hard ninety-degree corner where the, the two fences, two faces of the fence meet, then they could still have the majority of their yard. But as you look like that picture that you were showing on Blaine Street, I think just cutting across at forty-five and doing a bevel on that corner would really soften that. And they wouldn't lose too much.
They don't.
They'll probably stick a blue spruce there anyways, but, you know.
So I, I, I think I hear what Wendy is saying, especially when the sidewalk is narrow. And I think of my daughter when she was a young bicycle rider. There was a certain amount of wobble, and if a fence was there to penalize that mistake versus having a little room for the handlebars to encroach, again, just trying to make it stay comfortable for the user of the.
Like some kind of a right of way corridor almost in the, in the sidewalk, I mean, yeah. But still allowing, yeah, you're, you're right. Corner lots have no privacy. And it, they are for people who want to have a house that's visible on all sides, because that's what they are in this town.
Right.
But, you know, you think about other places that don't allow fences at all, and I think that the reason they do it is for that open look that Bill was talking about. That, you know, in a lot of contemporary subdivisions, it's, you're not allowed to put a fence because they want everything to be one big estate or something. And I think that's probably what was behind it.
How does all of this play out if we think of lot sizes getting smaller? Does that impact?
Then the private rear yard area gets smaller and smaller, and the impact of the side yard setback is larger and larger.
Right, and, and so perhaps at the time of the original ordinances, they were looking at lots, lots as being relatively larger. And we are now thinking about the value for economic and other reasons of compacting those.
And maybe people are more inclined when they get a smaller yard to put up a taller fence. Because they don't have, you know.
Get as distant as a.
Right, as a space.
Well, in that case, your neighbor really is your neighbor.
Yeah.
And having a little separation.
Or a big one.
Yeah, either way, but, yeah, you're looking for an opportunity to have some privacy. You may put, put a gate in it, but when you close the gate, it's your backyard.
Have any of the complaints or requests for variances been on new development?
Yes.
So we are not only talking about fences falling down. We're talking about people who bought a corner lot and, and are feeling constrained.
Let me clarify. Complaints, yes. Variances, no. So, so we do get complaints on a regular basis on new lots about having to push it and have this kind of orphan seventeen to twenty foot long that, that they can't really utilize. Would not process any variances on those lots. So I think every one of the seven were in existing developed neighborhoods. And I showed, we had four or five of them shown here. But the other two that I can recall were in older existing neighborhoods. We have not processed any variances on new lots in the world. And, and many of the ones that had variances, probably half of them had pre-existing fences in that location, and it was a replacement. And the other half were establishing new. So the one on D with Arvitas was a new. There's one over three blocks over here that was new. The Sixth Street, I think, was a new. Let me show you the Sixth Street. So, so there were about half and half, all in developed neighborhoods though.
So I have, I think you answered this question, okay, your hands are tied, so nothing would be grandfathered. These houses, as, as the fence falls down and needs repair, because they've had it for forty years, they wouldn't be.
They could apply.
Allow that for a variance.
Apply for variance.
A lot of these people, you know, it's a crap shoot, you know, they don't want to, and now it's going from, what, two seventy-five to three fifty?
Yep.
So if they lose, you know, there's three fifty that you're out, so.
So the amendment of the code is the only way to.
Right, and then what, what is the policing thing if a person does the first year? Put in new posts, rest the thing up to it, the next year puts new rails, and the third year puts new pickets?
If, if it's a sequence of events that leads to the effective outcome of the new fence, then they would have to modify it. That would be a violation of code. If they're gonna do one action with less than fifty percent to repair and restore, then we'd say, okay, that's the thing. But if you were trying to work around the code, I think effectively, they materially would be subverting the code and violating the code if they did that.
Because it's usually, and when, when a fence fails, it's usually the post first, and then the rails. So a lot of times, the pickets can be resalvaged. A lot of times, there might be some crack. But if it was some pretty thick pickets and you're curving taking them off, you know? It's like, it's like going into Red Lobster and having a barn wood interior.
If you can figure out some way to suspend ticket pickets from the trees while you replace the posts and rails.
So, but, you know, no wonder you could do that, because you've left fifty percent of the product there.
And you could, and we would, we would say, as long as at the end of the day, at the end of the project, you know, it's still less than fifty percent.
New.
More than fifty percent of the existing fence remains, you know, then we would say, that's fine. But if they, if you did forty-eight percent this year and something the next, then we probably would have to come visit with them and say, that was just subverting the code.
Because if you were to just cut the bottoms off and put it on like a, like a four by four deck bracket. I mean, you'd have, you wouldn't have any structural strength, but, I mean, you could salvage the four by fours and move them in, cut four edges off the stringers, and then be careful taking the pickets off and re-put them in. All the, the only thing you'd have is brackets, new concrete, and some nails.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Sure.
It, it seems like this is an illustration of we're trying to do a whole lot of work to solve a, a problem that might not be that complex. It sounds like this is a very specific problem that, that we're dealing with, which is that some houses have street side yards, which is effectively the same as their backyard. They want to put up or replace a six-foot fence. And it looks like, in looking through the, the research that, that you did, Bill, that Moscow is unique in having that restriction on street side yards. So it seems that if we simply remove that restriction, that on a street side yard, you can't have a fence over a certain height, you just said six-foot fence, that would take care of the problem. It seems like it's pretty, pretty isolated to a few lots. It's not gonna, on those lots, there might be some aesthetic differences, but I'd be hard pressed to notice one if I drove by. And people can replace their fences without having to go through a variance. People can build a new fence without having to go through a variance process, have their privacy, and it's taken care of. It does seem like we have to address the rest of the fence amendment at this, or, excuse me, the fence ordinance at this time, because that's not a problem that we're being asked to solve.
Yes, it'd be a very narrow amendment. Now, we'd make it broader than it needs to be, but that's only because this language repeats in every zoning district, and I'd like to just create one section that has the fence standards. So the ordinance is gonna be twenty-five pages. The effective change is just a little minor.
One paragraph in each.
Yeah, we just strike it in each zone. We just put it in chapter six. We have the fence standard. We could just repeat the language that's there today with, with the exception of the side, the street side setback limitation. And then the question is, we could include a reference to the side triangle to say that it can't, you know, if it's in the side triangle, it is limited to a height. And we could have a minimum separation from sidewalk and like Spokane, at seven feet from the face of the curb, if there was no walk. Assuming you could put a walk in a, a little tree lawn essentially area in. And so we could seduce something similar to that, and that would address probably ninety percent of the cases.
And on all those cases, it was done tastefully, where they started the fence line on the front facade of the house. Because I understand when I was talking with Mike, Ray, you know, on some of these houses, even though you could go, I mean, who wants to put Ford Apache right in front of a big, beautiful brick Georgian house? So, but if, if you went off the corners of the front facade, I think it would just be wings. The whole architecture wouldn't be affected at all.
Well, perfectly. Personally speaking, I, you know, I live in the country, and I grew up in the country. And if I moved into town, the first thing I would do is put up as high a fence as I could everywhere. And really, I would be fine with essentially Lewiston's code. You keep the, you keep the side triangle clear. It does make sense to have a certain setback, you know, next to the sidewalk. But other than that, you know, fences don't bother me that much. And, and if with, you know, I think, I think owner demand to put a, yeah, to put up Ford Apache is gonna be pretty limited. With the side yards on corner lots, you know, you're still gonna get, every now and again, you're gonna get the Ford Apache look just so that somebody can have some privacy. But like I say, I myself, I would, I think it'd be fine to say, keep the side triangle clear, you know, give it a, give it a clearance from the sidewalk, and six-foot fences are just fine.
It, it would be staff's recommendation to maintain limitations in the front yard.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And we don't have.
Go back to the country.
We don't have much issue with the front yards.
Yeah.
The only, you know, every once in a while, it's about that kind of one-third, two-thirds, and we are pretty flexible or more pervasive than that because a picket is pretty, it's not very side distracting if it's truly a big fence. So, so, I mean, it would be staff's recommendation to retain the front yard, but the street side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm kind of looking for concurrence. Side triangle is one issue. A little breathing space along the side for the sidewalk. But allow things to come out much further, not into the right of way, presumably.
Well, we have had some situations where there's an encroachment, but it's fairly, you may be, for example, in Fort Russell. And the street side on eighty-foot right of way can be fairly extensive. So what we generally do is the standard, whatever the height is, allow it to the property line. If there's an encroachment, we allow the same height to go into the right of way with the fence, because the fence is not necessarily, you know, a permanent structure. And so you could in those instances, but that same separation from sidewalk and side triangle would all apply. But you'd be amazed at how far up that right of way line is in, on some of the homes that are on an eighty-foot right of way corner intersection.
So to the front of the garage.
Yeah. And so we, we, in that instance, we would probably allow an encroachment for a fence in the right of way. And we just would want to kind of maintain the, from the perspective of, you know, the appearance is gonna be like as if they're, just like if they're shocked when they don't know their property line, just go out to the, to the curb line. It'd have, it'd have the same appearance.
But it was also nice, you could always step it down, like Mike let me go six foot to five foot to four foot to three foot. Then I almost met exactly where the neighbor's little picket fence was. So, and then that was tastefully done, so.
Are there reactions to what seems to be getting on the table, Joel?
I'm still trying to figure out what the proposed changes mean for what happens in new developments and what happens in terms of developer incentive in new developments. Does it, does it encourage developers to, to rely on a fenced sidewalk in, in, in planning their corner lots? I'm, I'm a bit worried about unintended consequences for new development here.
You mean making the lots smaller because they can count on being able to put up a fence on the side yard?
Um, and I, to, I, I like the aesthetic of, of the open space that, that our, that our current ordinance allows. I am sympathetic with the, the people who are caught in terms of fences that were legal when they built them forty years ago. I'm certainly sympathetic with that. And I, I really wish that we could do what Bill tells we, we can't do, is to somehow perpetuate the grandfather status. That's what, it would be my first choice, but, but I, I'm just worried about unintended consequences.
Well, you know, it's, it's slightly a paralleling issue, but just working with clients who have corner lots in Fort Russell, they can't really, basically, there's no room to do an addition to a lot of houses because of the, the fact that the right of way comes so far into the, so it's kind of a similar problem. Not as much flexibility with corner lots. And so that, some of them have actually bought other houses that get an infill lot rather than a corner lot.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, if, if it means making lots smaller and you're counting on the fence to give you privacy, I mean, greater density that people will go for, I think, is a good thing in general.
It's a trade-off between density and the, the open space, which I like.
I, I would really have a problem extending any kind of allowance into the front yard.
Yeah.
Be where I'd draw the line big time, because I think it really would close in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, I could, I could see the six to one vote immediately.
I think, I think it also would create security, you know, neighborhood watch security issues when you start having fences in front areas that are tall, so.
There certainly are other cities that, much more urban places that have walls and everything else that bound the street.
Barbed wire and glass on top.
Well, it's like, it's like in Winslow where we lived. I think there was a height restriction on front fences. But absolutely everybody, their backyard is a, is a six-foot high center block wall right up to the property. You know, a nice little, nice little private patio there in the backyard.
But, yeah, but that will not happen.
As far as this side yard height thing, as long as it's not a public health and safety issue, it's probably not our place to be legislating people's personal taste. I think, you know, if, if you put up a six-foot fence and you're on a corner lot and it doesn't obstruct anyone's vision, I don't really think that that's an issue that we should be dealing with. If it's out in the front yard and it's, you know, a situation where it, it is obstructing vision and causing blind corners and whatnot, then, then that's a public safety issue, or, or the, the setback from the sidewalk where there's enough room to keep pedestrians out of the street. That's, that's certainly a public safety thing, but I, but I don't see any public health and safety issue with a six-foot fence on the side that doesn't do any of those things.
Geez, two to five.
Bill's picture shows it great right there. Somebody's side yard is the neighbor's front yard.
Yeah.
You know, as soon as you get around that corner there, so that, I think that would be the only.
Yeah, there's.
But there's really, once you put some vegetation on, I don't even think you'd catch any of that.
And that is the thing. I mean, could the ordinance be written so that, or the change be written so it just applies to corner lots? And then, then the price you pay is that, yeah, every now and again, a corner lot is gonna have a fence that's closer to the street.
Yeah, that'd be the case, because only corner lots have a street side.
So if they were going to, at some point, put a sidewalk on that street, which some, they could happen, where would it line up with that fence? And how much leeway would there be between the sidewalk and the fence?
Typically, in existing developed areas, if they're gonna come in and put a sidewalk, it's gonna end up behind the curb. They're not gonna put a tree lawn in because they're tearing up, people have already landscaped, and they're trying to minimize the disruption. So they're gonna end up behind the curb. So if you had something that was seven feet from the back from the face of the curb, my, my guess is this is probably right on property line. And the sidewalk would have to be within, within the right of way, or we'd have to acquire a right of way or an easement for the sidewalk to exist. If you were to say you would like to have it seven feet back from the face of the curb, that would allow for a five-foot walk and a two-foot separation. That was kind of Spokane's standard. So it could either be two feet back from the curb, from the sidewalk, or if there is no sidewalk, five, seven feet back from the face of the curb that would allow for a future sidewalk installation and a little bit of clear space. And that way, seven feet, I mean, that's gonna probably coincide with property line in a lot of areas. So in that instance, it's not really harming them because it's probably at the property line. There's, there's gonna be few instances where the property line is actually gonna be closer to the curb line than that, there'd be relatively few. And so that would be, that would probably be a recommendation if we're, you know, if we're to talk about a separation from the sidewalk, they're gonna have to deal with those locations where a sidewalk might not exist, but could exist in the future and trying to allow for that.
So, yeah, I, I hear Joel's aesthetic argument. But I, I find myself feeling that was an aesthetic argument in an era when energy was cheap and we could build bigger spaces. And that's not something that I think we can afford. I, I keep asking myself, going forward, how do we stop doing business as usual? And because doing business as usual leads us to a climate that none of us want, I think. This is a stopping of doing business as usual for Moscow is to say, well, no, we could allow fences to be closer, and that might, over time, allow yards to be, lots to be smaller, and all of that would densify the city. So, Bill, do you have enough, or does anybody want to provide Bill another perspective? What I'm thinking is that we would be sending you away to bring back some draft ordinance for us to look at.
Correct. It would be a fairly simple ordinance if we were to remove limitation on street side yards, the exception of the side triangle, and a minimum separation from sidewalk or seven feet.
Or future, yeah.
That's easy. What, what we could do is, we could work on drafting a ordinance to bring back in two weeks. We could, I'd have to probably pre-notice it just a little bit, but we could hear it if we wanted to at the following meeting, the first meeting of September, September, my gosh. And then so we could make, the body could pull the hearing, take input, and decide what recommendation you'd like to provide to the city council.
Does that meet with your sense? General, general idea that we've given Bill and that kind of a schedule?
I think that's, that's, you know, most likely that could pass easily. I don't know if you want to do anything about just, you know, yeah, simply going the Lewiston route, aside from the side triangle and a setback. I mean, is that worth, is there enough interest that that would be worth pursuing?
I didn't hear other people saying, let it go out into the front yard. In fact, I was pretty put adult there in the front yard. So I don't think we've got the votes to go into the front yard.
I also think you, you kind of solved another problem on the future sidewalk. I think four feet and three feet, that allows kids on bicycles passing, also snow removal. So in, in this example right there, that's probably easily seven, eight feet there.
Yeah, I'd say that's easy, seven, eight. And it's an area that you can easily landscape, and you don't feel like they're losing a lot of yard area.
And I don't think a person would object to, oh, okay, I'll move it back another foot.
It just gives that kind of clear space off the street so that the fence isn't right out there. It just kind of gives a little bit of buffer, but they still get greater beneficial use of their rear yard area.
Well, think of D Street before the sidewalks went, and the, and the number of kids who had to go up and down that street with no sidewalks for thirty years or whatever, and the rest of us trying to walk to Rose Avenue or whatever. And if people had been able to put their fence right on the. On, yeah, on their property. I don't know where the property line sits on D Street, but it, it scares me to think of what would have happened. So having that defined, you know, where there is that separation, if we're accommodating future sidewalks, it, to me, it's important.
If, if something like this was, was what we came up with, with this, this would address your issue quite a bit.
Yeah, this would solve almost every one of these issues. Because I don't think people, they weren't saying, I want to block myself off from society in the front. I think that resale, that would be a, shooting yourself in the foot. It was, it was, basically, the whole year, like I said, a new thing comes up every year, and this was corner lots not having enough room in their back to even put up a volley ball net or something. They just, the, the whole side yard was for public benefit. the whole side yard was for public benefit for just curb appeal.
Okay, well, thanks for, yeah, thanks for meeting with me and, Bill, will you let me know what you got?
I will keep you in the loop.
Yep, yep.
If I could grab.
Oh, yeah.
So, Bill, the next item is review of the lot of record access requirements.
Doesn't that sound exciting?
Yeah, well, you write these things with so many nouns in a row, and so many adjectives in a row. I have to parse them carefully.
I need some counseling. Okay. This is not, in the thumbnail, well, here, I'll go through it. There are two current sections of zoning code that relate to building lots and access to building lots and requirement that they butt a public street right-of-way other than an alley for a minimum distance. And so Section A is fairly long, but essentially it says every lot has to abut a public street right-of-way other than alley for a minimum distance of 40 feet. And then we have a number of exceptions for cul-de-sac lots and flagpole lots and twin home and townhouse, but essentially it says all lots have to abut a public street other than an alley. The other is B, Item B states that every building hereafter erected or moved shall be on a lot abutting a public street. All structures shall be so located as provide safe and convenient access for servicing fire protection and required off-street parking. So essentially, if you want to develop a lot or erect a building on a lot, it has to abut a public street other than an alley. We have a number of lots in town that don't meet the standard, they're pre-existing. We have a section of the code that discusses non-conforming lots of record, but it states essentially that wherever residential uses are allowed, a non-conforming lot of record, even if it doesn't meet the minimum lot size or the minimum lot width, is entitled to a single-family dwelling only. It doesn't address the street frontage requirements or the access to streets, this section. So while I did, you know, I think that was intended to address it as we adopt or change minimum lot sizes. And, you know, at one point in time, lots were 25 feet in width, and you bought however many you needed to fit the house you were going to build on it. Essentially, it was recognizing that all those lots that were legally approved by the council are entitled to release a single-family home. If they, if they didn't meet the lot area or lot width requirements, it really didn't address the access standard that is in the other section of the zoning code. So we have a number of lots in town that are either provided access via an alley, via a private lane, or other similar model of access, or across somebody else's private property, and that if they were to be destroyed, they couldn't reconstruct because they couldn't meet that standard. Or there are some that are vacant that recently were requesting development that were denied development because they didn't abut a public street. And so technically, you know, that provision zoning code prohibit the development or redevelopment of those lots. And in many instances, we allow for flagpole lots with a 20-foot-wide flagpole that only has to, under the fire code, have a 12-foot-wide driveway that can be 150 feet long to gain access to that, yet we have lots that front on a 20-foot-wide public alley that technically, under the zoning code, says if you're not abutting a public street, you can't, you can't be developed. So we have, on at least one occasion, granted a variance from this lot frontage requirement to allow for a lot to develop. But we've had a recent case where a challenge to an application where there was an assertion that the scope of a variance is limited and lot frontage is not something the city can address through a variance action. And so the specific standard underneath the Local Land Use Planning Act under variances states that variances address the bulk and placement requirements as to lot size, lot coverage, or other ordinance provisions affecting the size or shape of the structure or the placement of the structure upon lots or the size of lots. So essentially, you can grant a variance for setbacks or for lot size or for lot width, but it doesn't say anything about lot, street, frontage requirements. And so we have always viewed that as being kind of a characteristic of a lot, very much like a lot width, very much like a lot frontage. The city attorney in this recent case and challenge said, well, we should probably read it as narrowly as it is authorized underneath LUPA, and these are the things that you can grant a variance for. And he did not feel that we could, or that it certainly could be challenged, granting a variance from the street frontage or access requirements could be challenged, and therefore has recommended that we consider a legislative amendment to lots that had been previously recognized and approved by the council to address that issue. The concern is that denying any development opportunity on lots that were previously approved by, by the city, you know, would be, could be considered regulatory takings, and that you're denying any economic, economically viable uses of the property.
So, is that, is that a state regulation that you can't do the?
That is the state law.
Okay.
That, that kind of italicized.
Tells you what you can do with a variance for?
Yeah, this language is an excerpt from what, you know, under the, under LUPA for variances on what can be considered under a variance. The city's definition of a variance is much more broad. So in zoning code, it is a, it is essentially, I'll just read it for you. The definition of variance underneath the city's code. A variance is the means by which an adjustment is made in the application of the specific regulations of the zoning code to a particular piece of property, which because of its special circumstances applicable to it, is deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed to other properties in the same zoning district or vicinity, and which adjusts remedy, which, and which adjustment remedies disparity, I lost my place, and which adjustment remedies disparity in privileges. So it means adjustments made to the application of the specific regulations of zoning code, which is kind of the entirety of this, which, of which the street standards. But that definition is broader than the authorization underneath LUPA, and that is really the core, the crux of the issue. We cannot broaden the entitlement or the authority vested to us by LUPA. And so while we have utilized variances, or the city has utilized variances, and actually fairly broad matter in the past, because of a potential challenge of that consideration, you know, the view is we need to hold to what LUPA's allowing us, and it's not specific, even though I still think it's a characteristic of a lot, but, but it's not in the black and white lettering of the law there. So that's kind of where we find ourselves. So this, there are a number of lots, and we always run in the situation of, well, what is considered to be an alley or a street? But there are a number of properties, and for example, that one-way section of Hayes is only actually platted in 16 feet in width. I think that we probably technically would consider a street, even though zoning code says a minimum right-of-way width for a street is 50 feet, that'd just be, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. So I'm not sure that these necessarily, we would classify that. I think we would probably consider that still to be a street. Hidden Lane is kind of a good example. We've got four lots there that are off of two alleys. Those alleys, again, I think are only 16 or 14 feet in width. There are three lots, but those, actually, one doesn't even abut, those has to cross the adjacent lot to gain access, so these would be problematic. There's a section up there on Residence where Residence Street ends and an alley begins, platted alley continues, that's in that situation. There are also three parcels on what we call deacon extension, which is really truly not deacon extension, it's private property. And so we have three lots here that don't front on a public street. And so, you know, there are a number of lots that are in that situation. I think there's one actually right there too as well. I guess it's a Hayes lot. They're in that situation. The city attorney has recommended we consider a legislative amendment to exempt these prior recognized and approved lots from this requirement so long as we have adequate access to ensure life safety protection, just so we're not in a situation of placing those in, you know, a position of regulatory takings, or the city's not in that kind of, in that position. Some sample language could be just the addition of a number four in that section, which would state that legal lots of record that have been approved by the city council prior to the adoption of the zoning code, and which do not above a public street right-of-way shall be accepted from this requirement where sufficient permanent legal access is available via public right-of-way, private access easement, or other legal means to provide safe and convenient access for servicing fire protection and required off-street parking. And it would just essentially exempt out some of these old ones. We don't necessarily want to create new ones, but we do create a number of new ones, quite honestly, in PUDs. But those are viewed to be a specific zoning code for those individual lots, and so we have the flexibility to make adjustments. So every lot that's on, in Tampoucou Commons, or it's in Greensides, or in Green Acres, you know, none of those actually abut a public street, it's all interior private streets, but they provide that function, and through the PUD approval, we can authorize that action. So this would be a fairly simple and fairly narrow targeted amendment just to address that provision of the code. And as I mentioned, the city attorney has suggested that we remedy that in expedient manner.
So right now, if one of those houses burned, they wouldn't be able to rebuild?
That could potentially be the case. You know, I don't think the city wants to be in that position of making that determination. It couldn't meet the black and white requirements of the code, and, and so this would address that.
Some of those that you show, particularly the ones on the deacon extension, and the one, I guess, up on Residence, those look like fairly large parcels. Would they be subdividable?
We would not.
Splittable? I mean, any, so does your language need to specify that they cannot be altered?
There wouldn't be a lot of record in existence at the time of the adoption of that amendment, and so.
Ah, so if I split it, now one of them is not a lot of record.
We would not approve a lot of division, because they'd be creating a new lot that doesn't meet that standard.
Okay, okay. So that's how you prevent that happening, okay? And would, do they all have some recognizable legal means of access?
The only one that's in question is this. And as the owner of this original property began to convey pieces, this portion that was the drive was conveyed for a couple transactions and then just fell off the legal descriptions at one point in time. And so while I'm sure the properties had, would have a claim of a prescriptive easement, if a court were, you know, if they went to court and missed or declared that right, nobody's challenged the use. You know, there's been some confusion. At one point, one owner felt that they owned it, and then they actually recognized it in doing the deed and research and legal description of the conveyance department over time, that that piece was just kind of dropped off. And I think everybody just kind of assumed that it was, everybody was using it, and there was an alley. And so as legal descriptions were developed over time, that just kind of disappeared. And so there's probably some, you know, some relatives of somebody at some point legally probably still owns that piece, but every property owner has, has essentially, you know, a prescriptive easement for use. And that's, that's the only one that I, that I think is uncertain. These are actually platted, these are all platted, and this is all platted. So those are all dedicated public rights away, either alleys of, or some, some nature. This is the only one that, that if that were to occur, or a future development were to occur here, somebody's going to need to resolve that. And whether that is the city were to come in and condemn or take or develop as a public alley, or the, you know, somebody was to dedicate it to the city, the legal owner. But as far as we could tell during the research, and we had a fair amount of research during the two proposed developments next door, finally ascertained that that was never dedicated to the public, never accepted to the public, and was just a piece that got lost in conveyance over time. But everybody uses it like a public.
It's got street sign on everything, doesn't it?
It does.
So like a prescriptive easement that you're talking about, that essentially is, hey, we've been using this for 50 years, and so if we go to court, we have a leg to stand on?
Correct. And even, I don't know what the history, the length of the city's maintenance, but there's even adverse possession of the cities, if you've been maintained as a public right-of-way or public road over a certain period of time, you can claim it as public right-of-way. And there, there are a number of things that we, at the time, nothing pressed the issue, so we didn't wade into resolving at that point in time.
So the proposed language that you showed us would give a framework for cleaning up all of them, but the one is not, would actually need to do a little legal work on its own to get clean?
I think that one may take some further efforts at some point in time, but until somebody is interested in doing something to the property, the status quo can continue.
Just let that one sit there until somebody wants to do something different?
We have plenty to do. We don't need to look for things to go dig up at the moment.
So we need a motion to send this recommendation of a legislative amendment to council, or?
We, if you would like, if you just give direction to me that I could draft an ordinance in the same fashion as the fence item, and we could have a panel X meeting and possibly hearing on the meeting outside.
It seems reasonable.
Okay. As the general is said, that you should proceed. Review of residential allowance within commercial zoning districts.
I don't have a PowerPoint on this one, but we do have a, Mike had prepared a memo in the packet. This was a continuation of the discussion that came out of the north Maine, the expansion of Main Street North on Main from A to E. But honestly, we've had a number of inquiries in other areas of town where there is a renewed interest in establishing residential uses above or in conjunction with the commercial use. And oftentimes, it's for, you know, a dwelling or residence for the owner of the business living above the shop. And so we've had several, like some south of towns and on the east, west side of town, that have expressed interest. And so out of our discussion, one of the actions that we felt that we could help further the council's goal for the perceived area was to facilitate and allow increased residential use in commercial districts. Specifically, we're looking at the Motor Business District because of the Main Street area that we were looking at, but certainly it could, it could also occur in other, in other commercial districts. And we also had the Anytime Fitness Project, where they added the residential uses above the fitness center and had to come through a planned unit development, PUD approval for that to occur, because that was the only manner in which residential uses are currently allowed in the Motor Business District. And the commission commented at that time that they, these are the kind of projects they'd like to see, and they'd rather not have them have to go through the PUD process in order to accomplish that. So I asked Mike to kind of go through and look at the existing allowances of residential uses in the city's commercial districts. And so the first table in the memo identifies and walks through residential office and neighborhood business. Residential office is really our four with enhanced commercial uses, so residential uses are permitted by right. Neighborhood business is neighbor, neighborhood-focused, commercial service delivery, but because of that, it's much, it's handled much in the way that it is in the Central Business District, where residential uses are allowed behind or above commercial users. The RTO district, at this point, does not allow any residential uses, and I think that's probably a conversation with your renewal agency to consider whether any should be allowed. So we really haven't addressed that at this point in time. The Central Business District, again, they're allowed generally above and behind commercial users. The General Business District actually has residential uses as a conditional use permit, and the Motor Business District has the planned unit development option. It also has the allowance for one dwelling when it's customary and incidental to the principal use of the property, so it's kind of the hotel, or a watchman, or a caretaker on the premise. Industrial Zone also has a CU for that caretaker, and then the UFC District allows for both the above and behind the commercial users, as well as ground floor residential by condition use permit. So that's kind of the current condition in the district. Mike can looked at some of the, looked again at Lewiston, Pullman, Court Lane, and the Missoula, and just looking at how residential uses were permitted in other communities around us. In Lewiston, they're allowed in the downtown core above commercial uses. And it looks like there, there's a condition use permit for the replacement of non-conforming residential uses in Lewiston as well, where they're located on, in commercial areas. And Pullman, they're allowed over or under permitted use on ground level in all commercial zones, and single-family dwellers are allowed in their neighborhood commercial districts. Court Lane, looked like residential uses are allowed in almost all commercial districts. The neighborhood commercial and community commercial zones prohibited from being on the ground floor. And Missoula appeared to allow it pretty much by right in all of the commercial zones. So we went through reviewing that. Mike has some recommendations on some potential changes. Generally, within the Motor Business District, they would allow residential uses above or behind commercial uses as a permitted use. We would eliminate the watchman and caretaker provision, obviously, that would no longer be necessary. And that if anything was going to be on a ground floor, we could treat it like the UFC, where it'd be a CU for a ground floor residential use, just to take a look at. it'd be a CU for ground floor residential use, just to take a look at how it would interplay with commercial frontage and other commercial uses in the area. The same essentially for the general business district, so above and behind, we'd like to see that in the GB district, so making that a use by right, potentially also considering the ground floor residential, whether that should be a condition use. Neighborhood business, again, allows commercial uses above and behind by right right now, and he was suggesting a CU for ground four. You could have situations in neighborhood business zone where it's maybe a corner and commercial works on one frontage and ground floor, but as you wrap and you move into the neighborhood, it might make sense to go down to residential on the ground floor. And so for allowing that opportunity there. And then in the industrial zone, he was suggesting allowing that one caretaker by right, the watchman. We do have that fairly often in the industrial district, and I don't know why we necessarily need to require a condition use permit for that.
You know, I was thinking of a Renko Station and their commercial core where they have quite a few live work units, and they're split levels. I mean, you have to resolve the ADA, I guess, in some cases, but they run around that because they're individual units. So what about that? So you're only up a half story or down a half story potentially?
We'd still consider that probably above. Because a commercial is generally going to be the down story use. Is that where you found?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And the live works do have an exception from ADA because they're individual. If you're individual, single units, and a single occupant, above and below, you get some leniency from the ADA standards. And so we'd still consider that to be...
Even though it's not a full second story, it's like four feet up or something?
Yeah. But I think physically, that would be considered to be above. The, you know, you're just trying to maintain some kind of that level of commercial. And if you did, you know, I don't know what the advantage of doing that would be, other than...
I think because they went up yet another story, and it was a two-story unit.
So that was a way to get the heights down where they needed it to be. Because it's not really great advantage to put commercial where...
Below grade.
Below grade. Just because of the accessibility challenges you can run into. But, but I think we would, we would probably review that as being above. It's not interrupting the, you know, if you had the residential unit at grade and the commercial was in the basement, that's, I think we probably would say. But if it was a half, you know, to where it wasn't completely below grade, then I think we could certainly consider that probably to be above.
Because the consideration is what's happening on the street front to the experience of somebody, is it punctuated by effectively a blank, the residential piece being a blank?
Right.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my question, was again, the sort of the big picture question of why, why do you want to limit the residential in a, in a commercial district? And again, is it just to maintain a commercial affronted?
That, you know, to, to ensure that you can get the concentration of commercial uses and make it a more successful commercial district. Sometimes it's preservation of commercially zoned areas. You only have a certain amount of commercially zoned property, and you want to protect that inventory, I mean, from the market moving in and possibly doing what's the short term, immediate gain, but precluding the long-term use of that property. And the A Street corridor could be construed as, as an area where that occurred, where, you know, when the city initially punched the road through, it was zoned for commercial users and intended to be a commercial district. And it came in through the PUD approvals to fill up with multifamily. And now trying to replace that commercial opportunity, we don't have many areas where that, you know, of arterials that are of adequate capacity. And so sometimes it's a preservation of that commercial opportunity and not having your commercial, you know, commercially zoned stock get converted to some of their use because it, in the short term, maybe is the most economical use, but in the long term, you're wishing you had a place for more commercial users, and that was the corridor that would have been a good one for that to happen. So, you know, part of it allows, just allows that opportunity. If it's mixture and you're getting the commercial on the ground floor, and they're just adding icing on top for the residential, then great, you're preserving that commercial opportunity. But I think that's, that's one of the reasons why you'd really want to look at it and see whether this is consistent with what the community, you know, wants to do long term.
I suppose the other would be to think of maybe more resort communities or communities that have grown a lot and developed a lot of commercial stuff without changing their architecture, and all of a sudden you have all these houses that are trying to serve as commercial. We don't have many examples, the Terrographics on Third and...
You've got some, you've got some on the east side of Washington.
Oh, yeah, right. The general business there.
North of the Credit Union, we've got the, we've kind of, we have a row of RO that heads up, and there's a few offices up between.
And on some of the side streets.
Yep.
So as a transition, as the arterial developed, the house being repurposed is somewhat okay, but at some point it gets a little awkward for the commercial use, and having those intruded houses here and there doesn't seem, it seems like a step backwards.
Or if you're really trying to, if you're trying to, and we've had several subdivisions that have tried to put some neighborhood business into the district. So if, if you were trying to preserve that for commercial activity that could serve the subdivision, but the subdivision is taking time to build out, until it builds out, there's really not the market to support the commercial, and if you allowed it to convert by right to residential on the ground floor, that might end up just as houses, and you lose that opportunity to establish it. So sometimes the timing of trying to provide that community, that neighborhood service district, but it's going to take time for that neighborhood to develop and try to protect that area. So there could be some instances I could see where you might want to have to look at.
I think that's happened to a lot of our RO, is it's gone R4.
Yeah.
So why, why do we object to residential use in the RTO? What's the negativity? Why would that be a problem? Don't they need a watchman or a caretaker? Is it just as well as an industrial, or?
I don't, you know, it's, it's intended to be a technology tech park. And so it's just not a conversation we've had with the agency about what is the agency envision? I mean, that's kind of a joint project. RTO was created specifically for that, for that development. And so we just hadn't engaged in that conversation with, with the agency, and I think the agency has its own covenants and restrictions on use. It does not allow any residential use in that area right now. And so it just was a, maybe a longer conversation to have with the agency about what do they envision?
Because that's the only place that's zoned that way, so if they have their own covenants, then it's pointless for us to do anything about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Would there be any advantage to, even though they have their own covenants, that will prevent it for any future use, just to kind of make, make it uniform all the way through the districts?
It certainly could be. I think it's just, it's just a conversation we need to have with the agency, because you could see small, you know, I could see live work units that could fit in with the park, but it's just, like I said, we would want to consult with the RA and, and the owners, you know, within, within the development, just kind of see what they envision for use and how do they see residential fitting within that area. I mean, in a typical office park development, you don't see a lot of residential allowance because there's just kind of a certain aesthetic they're trying to maintain. And so when you start getting satellite dishes and other things, it can detract from that.
So what's your sense? Do you want to put this on the same sort of path of saying, let's see if we can bring in ordinance? I don't know whether we could do it at the same timeframe or a little longer timeframe?
I think, I think if we push probably one meeting back from the others on the draft ordinance, it's going to take us a little bit longer to go through this.
Okay.
Not, not a significant change, but I just, I don't want to promise too much. We'll see what we can, what we can get in the queue.
But the general sense is to proceed with this change and not roll RTO into the conversation?
Yeah. It could always be a separate conversation later.
Citizen survey questions.
That one I don't have yet.
Okay. So you all will recall that last time we talked about the, every other year, City of Moscow does a statistically valid survey of citizens and invites commissions to submit questions to be considered as part of that, along with the standard demographics and all that's, that's normally there. We talked about it a little bit, and one of the things that, one of the ideas that was floated was around water. And we recognized, I think last time, that, that questions about water may be bigger than the interests of planning and zoning and may involve the Sustainable Environment Commission. I opened a conversation with Steve. I've drawn a blank on his last name. Nick?
From?
Chair of SEC.
Oh, oh. McGeehan.
McGeehan. Steve McGeehan, Chair of SEC, about them proposing a water question, and that we might, if it were in the form of how important do you think each of the following is, we might provide one of the leaves or two of them, and they might put in some that are like toilet exchange program, or zero, you know, more zero escaping program, or several that were more on the immediate onsite water use. We might add a leaf that was a planning water use one. And then I raised the same, that idea then with the tree commission, did they want to get in on the, if such a thing were developing in on the act, trees relative to, as a water conservation strategy, which might help inform the conversation that we had, we had a while ago, and tree commission has had more of, about changing the ordinance for tree planting. If there was a sense that the trees as a water conservation strategy were valuable, that might inform that whole piece of work. Anyway, so I just wanted to report back that your thoughts about water, I'm trying to shepherd into this sort of a structure. So if you have a leaf or two, I think we could get it in there, in a framework, in a question that, that they would ask, leaving us two questions.
What about something, well, I don't know how specific or general these need to be, but it just didn't, it goes into the shared reading discussion a little bit, but things like, I know that right now, in the city, or even in the county, you're prohibited from using gray water from your washing machine or your, or your shower, whatever, to water, to irrigate. And so a question about, connected with that, that would be, it's more building department stuff, but it certainly...
It's state health.
Yeah. And there are other jurisdictions that allow that now, you know?
You can do it, it's just ask me an underground drain field.
It's sub-irrigation only.
Oh, that's, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's allowed, but it's, it's so kind of cumbersome and extensive that nobody, not many people.
Well, a question like that, that starts to look at it more from rain harvesting standpoint, or, or water harvesting gray water. Another one would be just along the lines of policy in terms of what, how does the public feel about planning and zoning, thinking about mitigation strategies for climate change or adaptive adaptation strategies? Are they more in one camp or the other, or both? And I don't know if that takes too much education of the public to really ask a question they can answer, but it's just something to put out there. You know, how much should we be considering climate change in our policy development or policy recommendations to council or whatever? I don't know, just...
So to preview the readings discussion, one of them, well, one of the sections in one of them was about building the political consensus. So the right question, if we could imagine what that was, might contribute to data to build the consensus for some kinds of, and maybe you don't want to ask it in terms of climate change so much as specifics, like would, would the city modifying its zoning code to encourage or facilitate rooftop solar? Is that something we should do? Should we do something to facilitate or encourage?
Some more specific questions, yeah.
And we would know that all of those stemmed out of a thinking from things like we're reading about helping the city with adaptation or mitigation.
This sort of related to that, and the information may be out there somewhere already, but I'd be interested to know if people's attitudes in the city or about density are changing at all? If, if everybody still wants their single family house on their own lot, and that's the only acceptable thing for them?
All I know is that when I go into a community with my students who are dead, we always said, don't use the D word in a rural area. You just kind of come around it from different, a different way, you know, of the benefits of clustered development, rather than, density scares people as a word by itself. Just from personal experience.
Especially in a college town.
The what?
In a college town, it's a loaded question.
That means you want to put 18 college students in your basement.
Exactly. Now, we have asked questions in the past. We had a multi-part question about what's important to you about your neighborhood or what things. And, you know, single family or a mixture of housing types, we're kind of asked it a little bit more too single about, you know, what's important to them to kind of get a sense of, not using the term density, but, you know, did they like having a mixture of housing types in their neighborhood, or did they like it being single family? And as you could tell, when you looked at those results over different survey quadrants, the responses were different depending upon what people were living within. But we could, we could take a look at that, and just, I could, at the next meeting, we could take a look at that. We're running a little late tonight, but I could, we've got two more meetings before these are due, so we do have a little more time to work on it. But we could maybe look at that question, and sometimes it's kind of fun to run a question six years later to see if there's any change. Now, two dots don't make a trend, but if you could ask a question every two years, once you get three, then you can start to see if it's actually heading some direction. And so it might be worth asking that question again about what's important to them in their neighborhood, and, because we had like proxent and commercial services and walkability and a few things, just to kind of gauge what people think's important to them, and that...
So if they had a little list that they could write things on?
Yeah, so we, I could, we can include it in the packet for next, next meeting and...
And can I add, last time I brought up the retirees and elder sort of idea of seniors? If we could come up with some question, and that might kind of connect to that, too. There are places that have done some planning and adding of districts just about senior housing or retirement housing and stuff. So I noticed that the 2012 city survey, like almost half of the folks that responded to the survey are over 55. And so I think, you know, adding some kind of question about, what about, would you be in favor of the city doing some work about, you know, exploration about, I guess, retirement housing districts? Or zoning?
Aging in place.
Aging in place kind of stuff, so. And that's, kind of gets to the density thing, too, because folks, when they're older, might want to start, you know, being in, in cohousing or...
Mowing the lawn loses its magic.
So I really think we should, you know...
Pursue that.
Yeah.
So, and again...
And if I run across a good article or something.
And again, that might suggest a momentum around things that would contribute to climate adaptation in that it would potentially, the demographic also, smart growth. The demographic is also saying, yeah, we'd be happy if it were denser, if it were also walkable, or if there were neighbors of business.
And close to amenities, and it had a high walk score.
Right.
Right, right. So that, that might get at another angle in a way that...
But in language that would speak to a lot of folks that are invested in the community and invested in returning these surveys.
So I have heard, without using the D word, the desirability of density one, which you're suggesting we have something that we might be able to rerun.
Yep.
As one kind of idea. And Rebecca's put out an aging one, which I think is still a little unformed, but as a, as a direction. And I'm looking for a scent or a different one that's better than hers, and I'm trying to say the water one, I think we can take off the table and address with the help of our colleagues.
I just think it's a population that needs to be brought forward in some of these.
It is. The question is, what would we do to impact it through land use? So what, what could we do to have an impact upon the outcomes there through zoning? Because we can't restrict who lives within an area or the age of somebody through zoning. So what would we, we, the city do to facilitate that, to promote that, to not place barriers to that? So that, when you think about framing a question about, and I think it's an important topic, but trying to understand what is our role from the perspective of planning and zoning, what is our role in that discussion? And how could we have an impact so that we can frame a question that can help give us information? And that's the only, or, this could... And that's the only, or, this is what we can all think about.
I guess I want to go back to the Climate Action Plan. Are they normally, through most cities, going through, who is the custodian of that within city government?
Typically, it creates, well, I think planning's a part of it, but it's broader than that, in my opinion. It's, you know, there'd be a large role for us, but there'd be a large citizen group, and, you know, community groups above and beyond just that, because we only have kind of a certain piece of that. And so-
So it'd only be the land use part of it?
Right.
Yeah, which is what I was thinking, how do you get a question that kind of leads in with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and I think what you're leading, what we need to gauge is, what is the community's interest in the topic?
Right, right.
Because, to, you know, if the community really wants to engage in that, because it's going to take that kind of involvement and effort, if, you know, if there's not a significant interest, then some, you know, then that tells you something else. So I think, I think helping gauging that interest is really a key, a key starting point, and then move from there.
So, that almost sounds like a very directly worded question. What is your interest in the city developing a climate action plan?
Right.
Without specifying anything about what actions might be?
Do you support the city pursuing, you know, the establishment, or whatever it might be, however you want to word it, but just very direct?
Yeah, I think that it's starting-
Very answers there.
But, I mean, you need to know whether you've got the political support or not.
Right, right.
Sadly enough, I think it's going to take people looking up at Moscow Mountain Flames to really get much action going. That's been the track record so far.
Okay, so now I'm hearing that, sort of very direct, climate action plan question. Rebecca's seniors, the D-word, got three ideas floating around on the table right now. And maybe, and earlier we'd had some sort of, not asking the climate question, but asking about responses, and the value of those responses, so there might be two, two ways to go.
Sort of smart growth, more?
More smart growth questions, yeah.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lily.
Thank you.
And because you're also getting into the climate part, which I did the readings, and I asked ahead of time if I could sit in on that, I'm hearing a couple of things here in terms of climate action. If you couch it somehow in terms of, in view of weather events becoming more severe across the nation, then, then if you're looking for some kind of a action plan, you might get more interest. Rather than, if you couch it in the climate change aspect, you're not, you're going to get polarization, you're going to get problems. But if you, if you direct it toward, you know, increased fires, we're all dealing with the smoke that's coming from around us and everything, you might get more interest and more response, you know, more positive fashion. And in terms of the elder community, rather than in terms of services, or how to help the elders, could me, if you talk about encouraging some kind of economic development for whoever provides those services, or something, some, in some, I don't know what the terminology would be, or anything, but, but take it in terms of an economic development angle, rather than it's, we want to provide services, then. You could take some kind of angle there.
Seems to be getting closer.
Yeah.
Anybody hanging up the hill? Because I walked, I don't want to walk home.
Okay, so, some nuance, and I'm going to trust that Ann has captured some of that better than my notes here.
It relates to the readings, because the readings talk about doing that, too.
Right, right, a sort of obtuse angle approach.
Right, right, approach it from a-
Really looking at-
Co-benefits.
At impacts people can see in their everyday lives, because that's where you get the most leverage.
Right.
Okay. Maybe you, and I, and Bill will mull it around a little bit more before, and we've got one meeting that's very drafty, and then one that we need to finalize? Is that what it boils down to?
That would be it, yes.
And when does it, so it's due in October, or September?
It's due September 12th, so we'd have the second meeting of this month, and we'd have the first meeting of next, before that date.
Okay.
Okay.
We got two questions?
That's what they typically request, yeah.
Right. Unless we can find somebody to partner with, and pawn off half a question on there.
Yeah.
So, the shared readings discussion, we've sort of segued into a little piece of that What sorts of things, I propose that you might, as you read, think about a question, what else did you want to learn about? Maybe there's more specifics to our content, our local context, or something that you would have a question on, that might guide research for some future readings. But what other thoughts or reactions did you perhaps add as well?
Well, I'll start by going out on a limb, but I skimmed through the readings, but as given how speculative the, the basis for, the evidence is, the basis is for any climate change taking place, let alone the causes of that, I think that a planning for mitigation of that would be premature at best.
And we're off and running.
I didn't see that in the readings, there was any evidence that this was speculative. I think the scientific evidence is pretty clear.
But, I disagree with that, I don't think so. I mean, I did other readings other than those, but I disagree with that.
I mean, I think, I think that's a pretty good example of what the biggest problem's going to be, is that the idea of doing any action has been paralyzed by that polarization. I think, in my pessimistic point of view, that quite literally, there's not going to be any big action until we really have some horrible, horrible things going on. And other than that, you know, I think, I think the, the idea of engaging in any kind of action to help actually solve the major problem has just been stopped, it's been paralyzed. I think the only thing we could do, you know, we, we could look at, how do we mitigate, you know, major flooding, major droughts, things like that, which are the most likely things to happen as a consequence of it here. There's probably some things you can do in the code, but I think that, you know, it's like, there's always a cost for it, and I don't think that there would be the public support for doing anything to, out there, until, like I say, after the, after the disasters. You know, after the nearing addition burns to the ground, then people might be paying more attention. But until that point, I don't know that there's really a whole lot to do.
Well, if you took a issue, say, I mean, doesn't pertain directly to here, but I'm thinking, some cities, like Seattle, I think Portland's maybe already there, requiring, moving towards a hundred percent site water capture, because they have a stormwater runoff problem, period, and the public pays for it, taxes pay for it, everybody deals with the problem, that's a problem that's in everybody's face. And so, the smart strategy is to start to require new construction to retain site water onsite. And, and so, if you think in, along those terms, and you don't get into this polarization, you get into problems that everybody's dealing with, where, you know, those of us who believe in climate change, also get the benefit of strategies that address a specific problem related to it.
Along that same line, our current water concerns in Palouse are, are the same. I think we can agree that the ground bar is declining, and it's declining, it's unsustainable. And addressing that will also help address some of the climate change issues.
Well-
I think there's a number of examples like that.
Yes, and that are direct actions, that, whether we even use the C-word or not-
Right, exactly, just like the D-word.
Yeah.
I mean-
My daughter, I have a whole full calendar, I'm not allowed to say, so, I get that.
Yeah, like what Joel says about, the conservation of undefined finite resources is something we do regardless of which direction the climate's going. And it's, you know, it's difficult, I mean, certainly we have data that says that the temperature has increased over the last a hundred years, or whatever, but we, you know, what happened in the past is not a very good predictor of what's going to happen in the future, and never has been. And we can extrapolate that out all we want, but when you get down to it, in terms of planning in Leita County, if everyone in Leita County committed suicide, and we never used another drop of water, or burned another drop of fossil fuel, would have minimal effect on the world's climate. So, that's why it's a tough sell, I think, because people don't see that as something that they can do anything short-term to make any difference.
In the, in the land use article, they had a couple of tables, which were looking at different blocks of policy action. And did those policies, they were pricing the, the policy in terms of dollars per ton of greenhouse gas emissions saved. Some of those, it cost money to save the greenhouse gas emissions, and some of them were savings and saved the greenhouse gas emissions, it's like a double win.
Multiple benefit, kind of, yeah.
Right. And so-
Yeah, renewable energy is a double win situation. It doesn't generate anything, and it creates energy that you can use, so-
And several of the smart growth things were lumped together, as, again, one of those headings of, this is, really saves money, and happens to also save greenhouse emissions.
Well, the city doesn't have to extend infrastructure, development is more compact, for example, so there's savings there, but it also saves fossil fuel consumption of people going back and forth.
Materials to build, etc.
Just changing the residential allowance in commercial districts.
Right, right.
Right, that's-
Allows you to build housing close to services, close to employment.
Yeah, those are things that have an economic impact, that saves people money right now, and you're interested in that. You'll ride your bicycle to work if it's faster, and it saves you money. If it's more effort, and it takes longer, you're not going to do it. That, that's the key.
For me, it's safety. I mean, you know, in terms of riding a bike, it's the fastest way to get from my house to campus, boom, is on a bike, but I'm scared to death to go through downtown, and I want to ride on the sidewalk. So I walk.
A question that I had on page sixteen, seventeen, was around, what is our permitting process like for distributed energy generation, solar and electric, hot, solar, electric, and hot water ready housing? What I think they were driving at was, not that, not that something is being built with a solar panel on it, but like I did in my cookhouse project, I said to Jeff's Electric, "There will be someday a solar panel. Do what you need now while there's nothing in the walls, so that I can do this easily later." And he says, "Oh, I know what that is." And he dropped a wire from my attic down to my meter base. And that didn't cost me much, now it's all buried in the insulation, but when I want it, I know it's sitting there. Similarly, I put another hole in the foundation, and I told the plumber, "All the gray water goes out that hole. Then you join them outside." So if I want to do gray water, it's all in one place outside, that costs me something, more than the electrical one did. But, do we think about permitting that, encouraging that, you know, moving, so that we have the installed base there that people could build on later?
And currently, we don't have any active program where we promote that. If somebody wants to do that, we certainly facilitate that, in accordance with the codes. But there's, there's not a high demand or interest in that from, from many homeowners today.
What about the visibility of, say, PV panels downtown on buildings? Is there any restriction on that?
We don't have anything, now, we get into wind turbines, we may take a look at, but there's nothing right now that's an impediment to, to follow with voltages, or any other systems today.
Anything that we do, or don't do, or could do, relative to solar access?
We don't consider it today. I mean, there's nothing in the zone code that's regulating solar access to properties beyond, you know, the minimum setbacks and building height limitations, but there's nothing, or not regulating building placements, or heights, or loting patterns based on solar access. And there, again, it's kind of one of those things where there's not a lot of demand at this point in time, and dictating subdivision layout, or loting plans, based on that. I think having some demand from the consumer, and the developed community would help further that conversation, without that, it'd be a more difficult sell.
I did, I Googled to see if I could find if Idaho had a state-level climate action plan. And I found an executive order from 2007, saying, directing a process, but no evidence of any result of that. U of I apparently has some sort of a plan, relative to building energy consumption at Several things I got out of it that I want to talk to the tree commission about. Okay, other thoughts?
Don't buy property in Florida.
Okay.
Is the Sustainability Committee, is that a reality yet?
We've a Sustainability Commission, is a, is a full-fledged city commission.
And is there any talk in that organization about a community solar project? Where, where, you know, some marginal land would be used to put a huge array of solar panels that anyone in the community could buy into, as opposed to putting it on top of your house?
I have not heard of that. We had some discussions, oh, six, seven years ago, about, kind of the green, I think Alprota, at a council meeting, there was some discussion about the, creating a funding mechanism for the installation of solar, where the city could provide, you know, kind of low-interest loans to facilitate that, the green districts, I think-
Right, green LED, or LID.
Yeah, so, where it's kind of a, where the city can purchase installed, and the homeowner pays over time, like an LID assessment for public infrastructure improvements in front of a home, where you can kind of amortize that cost off over time. But there was just kind of a, a general discussion, but I don't think it advanced any further than that.
And I think we, partly we found that there were legal impediments at the state of Idaho to the financing mechanisms.
There were some, and, and actually, the state was pushing amendments, legislative amendments to facilitate it, because they had some manufacturers in southern Idaho, they were looking to set up some of these alternate, you know, some renewable energy, and they're wanting to create market demand by providing this funding vehicle, and the Department of Commerce Director left, and it never came back up since that time.
A while back, and I can't remember how far, Kelly Moore came here to talk to us about commercial building energy efficiency. He was concerned, looking at yet another concrete block one going on. We just currently use state rules for commercial energy efficiency.
We currently use the state zoning code.
Correct. Victoria?
Okay, I wanted a comment, and maybe a question. I was, was in a conversation with someone else who made, who made the comment about the polarization of climate change. If you take blame out of it, who caused it? Is it nature? Is it man? If you just take that out of there, and say, "Things are happening, what can we do to mitigate it?", you're going to get a lot further. Because, you know, what, what you said, you know, "If it's easier to ride my bike, and faster and cheaper, I'll do it." So what can you do to, to encourage those types of things? That's the direction you need to take, rather than to get into these huge polarized type situations. And then, something that I noticed is, there's a lot of talk in this article about ma- And then something that I noticed is there's a lot of talk in this article about maintaining green spaces and trees that help pull in the carbon and shade and keep the water from evaporating off of waterways, you know, a lot of specifics. And then there's a lot of talk about density, which to me always feels like an asphalt jungle when you start talking about density. And so I always am a little conflicted about, what are you doing here? I, I would note that in the ADU structures, where you, where you're still studying that, where you are suggesting that a certain percentage of the yard remains yard, so that you don't get a solid block of building on the yard, that would be a positive thing, and that would be a thing in that direction. And so I would go, I would do things like that, but I also wouldn't mind some clarification on how you deal with encouraging the green side, and yet you're doing density, which to me doesn't feel green, although I know in some ways it is, because if you have some density, then you're not having as big a carbon footprint. But I saw room for, you know, a little count, cross purposes there. And so what's the balancing act that makes that work?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can you answer?
That's a question.
Well, I agree. I think the language is important, that we talk about sustainability, smart growth, energy efficiency, wise use of resources that are, you know, being used up at incredible rate, that we don't have to have it be couched in climate change. So...
There was, there was one...
People, people, I think, even, you know, a lot of religious people are getting involved more in, you know, caring about the earth as a block, as a block of people who are active, so.
Bill, when we worked on the, I'm going to get the name wrong, the large retail Was there any, there was a thing in one of the articles about ordinance that had, that was requiring commercial facilities to use, to harvest rainwater for their landscaping. Did we do, we didn't do anything?
Nothing, and I don't believe there's anything in the LRE manuals related to rainwater harvesting.
There were some landscaping issues, but there...
Stormwater treatment.
Stormwater treatment.
Stormwater treatment is required, that's not required currently under the city code anywhere else, so there is stormwater treatment along with the detention. There is no harvesting requirement.
No harvesting requirement.
Today.
Do you know if there would be any impediment in state law to...
I don't know. I mean, the, I don't know. I really would need to take a look at that. I mean, I don't think at this point in time, there is a question of water rights at some point. So when water falls on the earth and ultimately ends up in the rivers and waters that have existing rights, there is a, I think there's kind of a, I don't know if that's been resolved yet. So I think on a, in your traditional residential rain barrel, nobody's going to cause a fuss, but when you get into larger scale, I just don't know whether there's any implications there.
If you tilted your whole parking lot and gathered it all, and then...
And then the river goes dry, and the person who has a water right no longer is receiving that water that naturally falls. That, that, I know that's been kind of propitating a little bit, and I don't know the answer to that one. Other than that, no. I mean, there's, you're not going to run into any plumbing code or health code issues with the use of that kind of clutch.
Especially with grain water.
You work with incentives rather than restrictions, such as with your sign ordinance, you used an incentive, incentive, they could have a bigger sign if they use landscaping, which is a real tiny piece of maybe climate, but I'm just saying that that's an incentive versus a restriction.
Right, sure.
Other thoughts?
I was thinking about your, the solar access question. I think that was a topic that was discussed quite extensively back about the time the PUD ordinance was developed. There was some consideration to possibly giving credit for methods that provided solar access, but I don't, I don't think it's currently in there. And it becomes really problematic, because trees grow. One, you know, one can encourage houses to be oriented so they have roof panels that face south rather than east and west, like my, my roof panels are mostly north. There are things one can do, but solar access is a very, very difficult topic.
Yeah, we have a up to 6% bonus for energy conservation. Up to 6% bonus may be awarded to PUD developments which reduce or conserve energy usage provision of building design, orientation, method and equipment which are energy efficient, including solar access consideration may be bonuses for the PUD project.
Well, it's actually, the energy efficiency is a broader umbrella, and solar access is a sub-thought within it.
Yeah, the orientation word in there is part of it.
Any place you want to go next on this topic? Don't have to answer tonight, you can mull it over. Probably at the next meeting, there'll be a call, at the next meeting, there will be a call for materials for our next shared reading. So you'll be pondering that in general, what materials you want to put forward to build. Okay. Well, with that, we're adjourned.